...to order. We're gonna begin with the prayer about Brett Knight.
Heavenly Father, we just want to begin by thanking you for the blessings and the mercies that you've just bestowed on our country and our community, Father. We just ask that you continue to bless us. Father, we ask that you be with every person in this room tonight, that you give us wisdom and grace to handle and to discuss whatever issues that we need to bring. Father, I just want to ask the special blessings upon the leaders of this city, on Livingston, Father. Father, bless the people that have stepped forward and answered your call to serve your people. Father, we ask that you just continue to be with our country and our community and our families tonight and the nights going forward. We ask that everything that we discussed tonight bring honor and glory to your name. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Chief Smith, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where each stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, Ms. Phelps. Will you lead the roll call, please?
Ms. Mary Dale.
Present.
Alderman Lender.
Can you say, "Here."
Alderman Knight.
Here.
Alderman Linder.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman Regal.
Here.
I'll press him. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Lender and a second by Alderman Dale to approve the minutes for the last meeting. Are there any public comments? Oh, sorry. We need to vote to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, now, do we have any public comments? Okay, on down on additions to the agenda, we do have one. We have Chief Braysmith that would like to make a comment. Chief Smith? Yes? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Borrell. We have been receiving several calls of an issue that deals with the square of longer vehicles, larger vehicles parking on the right side. As you come from the east end and come up to where Nationwide Insurance Company is right there, you're facing west, you kind of got to offset this a little bit. When you have larger vehicles parked up there on that one side, vehicles got to go either stop and let others pass and get over in the other lane to do so. Been brought to my attention multiple times and also asking if ours way, that we give encourage big trucks to take the bypass instead of coming through the square. I told my bring it to the board, be open up for discussion to the board to come up with some kind of solution or maybe an action that would take place to help the situation on that side. We now had calls and stuff of our vehicles that aren't good sized vehicles to have to go around ourselves or ask them to move so vehicles and traffic can make their way through there.
What kind of vehicles are we talking about?
Uh, well, the Dooley King Cats or Dooley's in there. My SUV if I pull up there.
I thought it was, so the space is designed for vehicles years ago.
Yeah.
They're a lot longer than these.
Yeah, but the space is not really long enough to take the vehicle out of the way of the traffic. And it's just being careful of what is parked on that one side, if there was some kind of way, shape, or form or fashion to do so. I know it's a discussion about big trucks come across the square, still take the bypass. That was another one we said, I said, "I bring it to the board." And but I'll come in with a discussion of that, or make some kind of perimeter park or whatever on one side there to help the traffic keep going through. We have had accidents of the cars catching cars and sticking out in the roadway.
Mayor? You have a statement? I noticed something in Cookland, the main downtown where the restaurants and all are, they had drawn lines behind the parking places, and if your vehicle passed that line, then you couldn't park there. And I agree, we need to do something up there because of pickups have gotten bigger. And in fact, tonight, I was riding the white line down through there to get around the long bed Ford truck.
Are they parking on the square or I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about?
Uh, Applewood side, those parking spaces, drive down to your right.
If you're coming up to the red light, there's a curve. And then if those bigger vehicles are out, you have to go over on the left side to make our stop. I did today, I had stopped. There was a F-250 there, had cars go by before I could see. You know, maybe the trucks could park on the left side and the cars on the right side. I don't know. Because you do have more room by the four hours.
So that's something that much prior to you, Mayor, about if we close something, maybe speak with the chartering, but comes to an order, it's about the parking on that one side that does offset there. And it has been that way for years, and I guess it's just getting more and more complaints as we go.
Father, few years of these spaceships. Move.
Any other questions or comments?
As I say, I'd like to get some guy, an engineer, come look at it, up to that. Be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay, next, is there any old business? If not, we will go on down to new business, downtown revitalization, Jean Gant.
I passed out a few minutes ago, a copy of our report, not a whole lot different, I'm afraid, than the last several times I've been up here. It seems like the projects are moving forward. The sidewalk project, we've got some additional hoops to jump through because it's taking some time and there are some additional funds that we may be able to tap into, some federal funds. And so we're working on that with our consultants. The courthouse plaza, we finally got today the utility certification, and we hope to receive a number to be within the next thirty days. And I think they've said that three times at least in the past, but we should be right there at it now. That was one of the things we were waiting on. The grant for Cedar Hill Streets, we hope to have an engineering consultant recommendation to the board at the December meeting, so that should be coming up pretty soon. The traffic modernization program, we have no update on that, but something to stay up, be taken care of. And then the T-Dex Site Development Grant, that's out of my jurisdiction, but there's some information there, some more wetland studies and things that have to be done, such as added on our report. Attached to that, you'll see two small projects that we did, that pictures of the electrical boxes there, we've added some historical pictures to them. They've drawn quite a bit of attention and everybody seems to like those. We've got a couple more planned for other electrical boxes around the square. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report unless there's any questions. Oh, sorry.
When will they pay church to you?
Next week. It's scheduled to be done, it's probably in the next couple of weeks, you think? Probably the next couple of weeks. We had some more sidewalks to put down, so we got them finished up. But other than that, yeah, that's it.
Looks nice down there.
It definitely really will. We're gonna, I think we made a very good investment there, and most of that's been handled by the city. And the city's done an excellent job of handling the project out there there. So it took a little longer than we hoped for, but as that goes into construction, usually the way it is.
I'm sure the businesses will, we'll lie in.
That's for sure. Any other question? I can answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Jean went over really what he knew about downtown revitalization and updated us because Mr. Evans could not be here tonight, but he sent the report to Jean.
And I apologize, I said I was gonna have the budget completed here tonight, but we don't have all the numbers yet from the construction projects, so that's some of them that we're working with very young getting done. So hopefully we'll have it for final approval next meeting.
Thank you. And next, we have Shannon Cantrell, she's coming to update us on Halloween and some upcoming events.
Hey, how did you all get to come to Halloween last weekend? It was, it definitely was a huge success, definitely happy with that. The weather was great, things went fairly smooth. You can't expect it to go 100% perfect, but it went really smooth thanks to the city and the youth leadership organization and all of our sponsors. They did a, they did a great job helping us out and had more help than normal, so definitely happy to have everybody there. Attendance seemed more than last year, at least most people told me that they felt like it was more than last year, so that should put us somewhere between eight and nine thousand people that were on our downtown square during that four hour period. After talking with some of our restaurants, they said they had some of the best sales that they ever had that day. All of them were packed, so it definitely was a great day for Livingston. Also, we applied for the tourism enhancement grant in the amount of $100,000 that I mentioned a couple meetings ago for the wayfoming signage for downtown and in and around Livingston. We were chosen for that grant, so we are gonna get funded and we will keep y'all updated on progress as we work closely with the mayor and Marcy Ackerman with Upper Cumberland Development District. Also, we are having a ribbon cutting and ribbon opening this Friday at 11:00 a.m. with Jordan Creek Farms. They're located at 530 Stacy Cemetery Lane in Gainesboro. They're actually about 20 minutes from Livingston, 20 minutes from Gainesboro. So the Gainesboro Jackson County Chamber and our chamber are joint enforcers for this ribbon cutting, and we are both hosting this event for Jordan Creek Farms because she will be serving both of our counties. Christmas in the Country dates this year will be November 29th, December 6th, and December 13th from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And the Christmas parade is December 14th at 4:00 p.m. Our theme this year is parade lights, and it is, and we do encourage everyone to decorate with Christmas lights this year on the floats because about the time the parade gets good and started and up to the square, it's gonna be dark. So I think having that will be a new addition to the parade, will be nice to see. And our grand marshal this year is Jean Gant, and he, we are doing this for him to honor all these efforts over the years to make Livingston and Newton County a better place for all of us. Deadline to sign up for the parade is December the 6th. We started signups today. And you do need to come by the chamber to get signed up for the parade. So one thing that we did do this year in addition to our downtown festivities, we have included the Festival of Trees. The DRC has purchased 15 live trees to be placed on the courthouse grounds. These trees will be sponsored by local businesses in the amount of $150. These businesses will decorate their tree in whatever theme that they want to decorate it in. They will be judged the day of the Christmas parade by the same judges that we have for the parade because they are out of town. And the winner of the best decorated tree will get their $150 back. And then all of these sponsorships for these trees will go back into the downtown revitalization fund to continue the work that that organization does in our downtown. And unless y'all have some questions, that's all I have.
Anyone? Thank you. Thank you, Jean. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Andre with the food truck ordinance.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, June, the Council adopted an ordinance, amending the zoning code to permit food trucks on, I think, the first and third, Thursday and Friday, every month in the central business district. This ordinance would adopt rules and regulations with respect to the use of food trucks within the city limits. It provides that a food truck permit is required. It sets out what is to be included in the application for the permit. It provides for an application fee for permits length of one day, 30 days, or 365 days. Permits would have to be renewed after they expire. Sets out criteria for when a permit may be refused or denied or revoked. If a permit is refused or denied or revoked, it provides for an appeal by the owner. Provides rules for use in parks and other municipal property and for use on private property. It also has some regulation for the effective signage, no freestanding signs are permitted under this ordinance. Waste collection and disposal, all waste is to be kept on the food truck and can't dispose if it has sign on the truck. Storage and discharge prohibited, and they have to be self-contained with their electrical services, so onboard generators or solar or the like, no flinging to city property. So I'll be happy to take any questions about this, but these, this would amend, this would add in chapter two, title nine of the municipal code. Anyone have any questions? We have to answer.
Chair? I appreciate your quick response to that, that surprised me. But when the DRC and the council and everybody would put the park and approve the plans about eight years ago, I guess David's the only one that was around then, we put in special boxes for food trucks there. So they wouldn't have to worry about generators running during the concerts because a lot of people sit by that pavilion back there on it. And spent a lot of money doing that because we had to do it twice. And I would like the city, those spaces allowed for food trucks to use our power rather than generators there.
Is that just in Central Park?
Yes, just in Central Park.
The council can.
There's four stations, there's four stations down there by the gates.
I have a question also. I kind of run through this thing a little bit. Said you have to have a million dollars, my building insurance, is that just on city property or is that any food truck in town?
That's just on city property, I believe.
Okay, so. First, they're supposed to. They're on their own private property out there, they don't have to have no insurance. So then, another question, beans, they have to pay income tax, have to buy a business permit through the city, have to buy a business permit through the county, why shouldn't they have to buy a permit?
Well, I wrote the ordinance based on the rules and regulations that were provided to me, so that's a political question for the council if the council doesn't believe those permissions.
And I also got another question.
Doesn't have to.
I got another question that I found in there. It said that they can just open four consecutive days. Is that correct?
No, that's been taken out.
That's been taken out?
Yes, that was.
Then it says that they can only operate from 29:00 a.m. in the morning to 9:00 p.m. at night. Is that correct?
I think that's right. It's not.
Okay. Then it says that they have to longer wake it up and be gone two hours after the 9:00 p.m. That's not on the private property, correct?
No.
That's just city property.
That's right.
So if they set up in a private spot and then have their electric and all that stuff run before they, they can plug in, they don't really have to leave at all, correct?
On their own private property or if they have permission from a private property?
Right, 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 but I mean, that's nothing to do with us.
That's right. We just want them out, out of the park, off the street, you know.
Okay, okay.
No holdovers.
Okay, once the health department sends their inspector to do their deal and then we're out of it, correct?
Um, what?
So they, they come and inspect your stand and do all that and roach and roach and all that stuff. So what am I getting at? We don't send our inspector down there and say, "This ain't right, you can't do that, you can't do that."
Well, it depends on what that is. I don't know, you know, if they're parking in the middle of the street or if they have a sign that's a freestanding sign that's obstructing.
But nothing, nothing to do with the process of setting food, correct?
I can't say for sure. I think we still have sanitation.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
We will apply our own, our own ordinances, so, and that's part of the reason for the permit too, so we can have oversight over who were, who were allowed.
What I'm getting at, I've kind of been into this, David. My wife, she had a hot dog stand over here on the bypass for several years.
Okay.
There's not a lot of money to be made, period. And if you make it so hard, I don't, they're not even gonna be able to stay in business.
Sure. That's something really council to consider.
So I know you gotta have rules and regulations, but you gotta be within means that they can operate.
Sure. We can amend this however you tell me to amend it. We have to.
We both sign? Study it, mandate it, what? I mean, don't get me wrong, when somebody puts food truck up or in or whatever, they're gonna line up down the highway for about a week and then it blows up. It's basically, you know, if you set up and it's pouring out the rain, nobody can get out and eat. I know what I'm talking about. But that was just my.
I'm not really sure what you're willing to consider, David. I don't, I don't think we.
What, what am I getting at? If we're doing this charter deal, man, this is a charter, it's gonna be hard for them to stay in business. I mean, what I'm saying is, it's too harsh, I think. But I mean, you know.
What would he do?
Well, I don't know, but I mean, um. I don't know, but I mean, I just feel like it's pretty harsh. I don't.
I'm not, I'm not educated in this game. I'm trying to get educated.
I don't really like the idea of the high dollar permit. I think $400 per year is way too expensive. I can see a $30 permit for one day to sit down here at the, at the park, but not sit down there on the lower end plant. You see what I'm talking about? So I mean, that's just what I was thinking. Why would you try to sign?
We can also pass it on the second reading with minor amendments, as long as they don't fundamentally change the character of the ordinance. So for instance, on the second reading, if the council will study, decide that $400 is too much for a year and wants to change that, you can make that change on the second reading and pass it, submit to that amendment, as long as it doesn't fundamentally change the character of what we're doing. So that's it all.
Let's keep them round and bring it back up next move.
About three hundred, I'd like to see, you know, we can have an opportunity. Does it well?
Absolutely. I'm with you. I'm with you. That way we can get our thoughts together, like Andre said, on the second reading.
Sure. That's if you pass it on first reading tonight, it still has to be passed twice and we have to have a public hearing.
Any changes we want to make, we could do it on the second reading?
I don't wanna say any because again, if you fundamentally change the character of it, then it requires another reading, but if we're making little tweaks here or there, I think you can do that, yeah.
Andre, what's it talk about? How long they can set up? You don't really say?
How long they can set up?
Yeah, like how many days are they gonna set up?
I don't know.
I understand that in this one.
Deal here, but it's got four consecutive days or somewhere, not to exceed four consecutive days. And I don't understand that.
I don't believe it talks about setting up, time for setting up for the under, you know, I didn't talk about seven, use of parks and other municipal property. Subsection five talks about having all equipment removed from designated area at the end of each day, no later than two hours following when it's permitted to operate, which would be eleven o'clock.
Well, we talked about this back in June, wasn't it? Thursday and Friday, the first and the third week?
First and second weekend, did we change that? I think it's first and third. That's what, maybe that's what I'm thinking.
What do you do next? I think when we go back to, back to June, here we see first, Thursday and Friday of every month, and the third, Thursday and Friday of every month. That's where the four days come to.
Yes. I see.
I said first, I thought it would come, so a hot dog or a hamburger, whether you do it, I don't hear when it. People leave every day.
What would we need to do for that to happen, if we're likely to do it any day?
We would have to amend the previous ordinance, I think, council does. To just take out the first and third, Thursday and Friday. But you can do that.
And they're not going to urgently break, it's true. They're not gonna do that much of being in the city. It'll, it'll be wide open for winter. And then hopefully eat all the meat and then start going to other places.
Survival and fitness. I'm gonna make a motion to approve this first ordinance or first reading, and we can think about if we want to change the price on the permit.
I'll second. Before we vote, I'd like to see an amendment made to where they could use the power down at the Central Park.
It's not, it's not my position to make a point of order, but that's a, that would have to be a separate motion. So the motion on the table, I believe this to pass as is, and we can make that change certainly on the second reading, but that's not the motion on the, on the table right now.
If we change that, would that change the?
You can rescind, you can withdraw your motion and make a new motion if you'd like.
We'll do that. All we're standing on motion on that.
Right.
And then new motion will be to approve this with Mr. Proctor's electoral services amendment.
In the, in simple words? Yep, okay.
I'll second. Okay, so Alderman Dale has made a motion to pass this with the addition of the electrical permits in Central Park with it written as it is currently.
No, but it'll be amended so they can use the electrical boxes in Central Park.
Right, so that, so that they, so with that amendment, and then I have a second by Alderman Lender. Okay. Let's take a vote. Let's do a roll call. Alderman Knight?
Yes, for one reason, not for the food trucks, but we love to work on this thing, so. Yes, for one reason, I'm part of the food trucks, but we love to work on this thing, so.
Alderman Linder?
Yes.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderman Rubel?
Yes.
Ms. Mary Dale?
Yes.
Alderman Elders?
Yes.
Marsha Pass. Is there any other business? If not?
Wait a minute. There, there is a certain mayor that hasn't heard that. That'll be the mayor, I happen to know that about.
I think I think the clients do have business to be.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear mayor. Happy birthday to you.
Speech, speech, of course, speech.
Thank you so much. Now, you have a motion to adjourn.
Over.
All right, motion made by Dale and seconded by Alderman Linder, media adjourned.